Please remain standing for the entrance of our presiding officer and the maid. And our Madam Secretary.
Hello, hello, hello. We are now about to start, I would like, uh, the Chair would like to call order our 105 regular session. Um, since we have MRP this morning, uh, please remain stand for the, our national anthem.
Hello, hello.
Um, hello, Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Okay, good morning to everyone, welcome to the 144, 43 regular session. Present for today's regular session, Mr. Chair, the following. The Honorable Glenn Ian Sabihoan, Honorable Elias Dangpalan, Honorable Catherine Turalba, we have Honorable Serapin Ramos, Honorable Uni Fredo Chong, Honorable Juan Pablo Nueva, Honorable Roy Andy Oligario, and we have Honorable Alapit Muhammad. On record, there are eight sir, where are on corum?
Considering, um, considering that the majority of this body is, um, present, and the Chair would like to declare that there's a corum.
Honorable Chair, at this time, Chair, I move for the adaption of the Order of Business for today.
There's a motion passed by Honorable our leader, any second?
Second, Honorable.
Seconded by Honorable Alapit, any discussion, amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved?
Honorable Chair, I move to sus, for the suspension of the rule to accommodate our visitors.
Who suspended?
Any visitors? Since there's none, Honorable Chair, the true, let's go to privilege our...
Anyone who would like to avail the privilege, Chair?
Since there're none, Honorable Chair, I move to a true with the visitors hour, and same time, I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session.
There's a motion passed by Honorable, uh, for leader, any second to that motion?
Second, Honorable.
Seconded by Honorable Alapit, any discussion, amendment, objection, there being none, motion approved?
I, I also move for to dispense the reading, Honorable Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Chong, any dis, um, second to that motion?
Second, Honorable.
Any discussion, amendment, objection, there being none, motion approved?
Back to Madam Secretary for the reference.
Madam Secretary?
Okay, for the reference of business calendar and first reading, under other communications, we have here the SK annual budget for CY 2025 of Barangay Magdaob.
Honorable Chair, I move that this, this item refer to committee on appropriation.
This matter will be referred on committee on appropriation.
We honor the committee report, sir.
Is there a committee report? Is there anybody? Is there any member of this honorable chamber was committee report? Please raise your hand.
As Honorable, uh, Catherine Turalba, you may have the floor.
Good morning, good morning, uh, Mr. Chair and Mr. Floor. Mr. Chair, just a one-minute recess before the committee report. Request of Ms. Maris Elsie De Leon, the owner of the subdivision Top Mars Five, Phase Five, located at Barangay Veterans Village of this municipality, in her intent, uh, to donate, uh, the roads and streets at Top Mars Five Veterans Village, and seeking for the resolution and, and approval of the deed of donation of the said request. Uh, the remarks and recommendation, Mr. Chair, the, the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, to which the said matter was referred for review, uh, had requested the technical assistance to review the pertinent documents submitted by Ms. Maris Elsie, uh, De Leon on, uh, the Office of the Municipal Planning and Development, uh, Coordinator, person of engineer, diputado, on the intent of Ms. Maris El De Leon to donate road lots, open space, and the community facility at Top Mars Five, uh, Top Mars Phase Five subdivision, located at Veterans Village, Ipil Sambuanga Cibugay in favor of the local government unit of Ipil. Under the revised implementing rules and regulations for the PP 220 of the Housing and Land Use Regulatory Board, or the HURB, under section 23, donation of roads, open spaces, and water supply, the owner or project developers on donating spaces in the project to the local government unit, uh, of the area after donation had been certified to by the board, and it shall be mandatory for the set of government to accept such donations. Furthermore, still under section 23, parks and playgrounds may be donated to the pertinent homeowners association of the project with the consent of the municipality consent under MD 1216. The developer has already submitted request for certification of project completion to HURB, also through this endeavor, the local government unit development, which directly contributes to the welfare of its residents. Mr. Chair, with this, I move for the adoption of the coming of housing and land utilization.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Alapit, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved?
Mr. Chair, may I still have the floor, I move, Mr. Chair, for the approval of the content of the donation to be undertaken by the, by Ms. Maris Elsie De Leon, developer and owner of Top Mars Five subdivision, with the local government, I so hope, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Chong, any second to that motion? Seconded by Honorable Chong, any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, Honorable Ramos?
I would like to request the Honorable Turalba as to the requirements submitted by the, by the donor. On some manner, they are complete on the potential, mga requirements, like for example, the title. I understand, can I notice the Top, Top Five?
Top Mars Five.
Top Mars Five. Can I hold subdivision there, including the road lots, that is over by only one title? And then road lots including the opening space?
May I interrupt, sir, sir, kindly use the mic, para madunggan sa, sa... Kindly use the mic para madunggan sa, sa... Sa, mic, mic. Mic, mic, sir, para madunggan sa, sa...
So that's my, uh, query as to whether the entire area, the road lots, including opening space, is covered by separate one title. Okay, can I go on, karsada? Subdivision road is covered only by one lot, lot number.
That's all, that's all, sir? Any comment from the proponent?
Comment from the proponent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, with the, with the inquiry of the Honorable Ramos, Mr. Chair, pertaining, pertaining to, if, if, uh, all the proposed, uh, roads or parts that is, uh, being intent to donate to the local government. Siguro ang iya hang, iya hang, if separate na ba ang title? Na na, sir?
Really is a...
Ah, yes, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, the only thing that they, uh, for, before they approved a, 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 the HURB is the resolution from the Sangguyam Payan and they did the donation of the roads, device, and other facilities to be donated to the local government of Ipil. It's what it be, it be, it be, by the, by the, of municipal planning and municipal coordinators.
If that is covered by separate title, is there also, also tax declaration?
Declaration is sure.
To that effect? Apoy tax declaration, ano? If I'm donate tax declaration, there should be also the market value, assets value?
Any more?
Indicated in the tax declaration. So, if na, ano, na, once that will be directed to the municipality of LGU Ipil, so my question in the previous year, sana, nagbayar ba buwes? Ang, ang kanang kuwan, kani developer, or sebis, si Madam, Madam Chong, eh, eh, indimenta, eh, mga napasayang position, siguro she continued paying the reality taxes. Okay, once madonet na dery sa posipio LGU Ipil, that will be extended. Ina apoy ding, ah, buwisan pa.
Okay.
So, any comment, ano? In the previous year, sana, is, is the kuwan developer, the owner bilat has paid continuously the taxes. Okay, kanang portion, ano, na, indimenta, wa, pa na madonet sa LGU Ipil, so they are bound to pay the reality taxes.
Okay.
Ang ang pagtanan, updated ba ang pagbayad ng buwes?
Okay, any comment from the proponent?
Uh, thank you, Mr., Mr. Chair. Uh, Honorable Ramos has also a point. Uh, we will not only, we will not only look up to this Top Mars Five subdivision, what is being discussed today, and we will also review, and look into those other faces, no? Faces, no? Uh, the...
Top Mars One, Two, Three, Four.
Maayaw, um, one observation, Ramos. Observe, Ramos. At the, at the, uh, Top Mars developer, uh, really pay those, uh, other taxes pertaining to these, pertaining to these subdivisions. With that, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, with the, with the resolution that this humble representation has presented, Mr. Chair, I move to withhold that, uh, resolution, uh, Mr. Chair, pending review on the other, uh, subdivision. As per concern of this, uh, chamber, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba, in a second? Seconded, uh... Um, seconded by Honorable Nueva, um, sir, can you wait for the discussion?
The owner of dela has five parcels of, kanang kuwan, di ba lima nakabok? So, may akong pagtanan, akong all of this, uh, five lots, nagbayad sa buwes?
Um, sir, excuse me, uh, napa pending na motion. Um, next na lang na kung kuwan, pag approved nila motion, i, ayan nanapun ako ikwan, ang ibang kuwan. So, yun is, um, seconded by Honorable Nueva, any discussion, amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved? Yes, sir?
Objection?
Wait on, wait on?
Agwi don, oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Honorable Turalba. Um, before we proceed, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Dr. Redalain Catalunya. Morning, Doc, um, any more committee report, respective committee report?
Committee report pa, napakal committee report.
Honorable Turalba?
Uh, committee report number 569. On the Committee on Appropriation, the subject is the annual budget CY 2025 of Barangay Tawai amounting to 8,349,297 pesos. The Committee on Appropriation, to which was referred the annual budget 2025 of Barangay Tawai of this municipality, uh, for review, evaluation, and approval. The said, uh, annual budget CY 2025 has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety effective upon its approval, subject to the posting requirements under the section 59 of RA 7160, and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the local government unit must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section 305 of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that the compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines and procedures in the budget execution phase, prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Law, budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report on the Committee on Appropriation.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba?
Second, Honorable.
Seconded by Honorable Alapit, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved?
Mr. Chair, uh, I move for a resolution declaring operative in its entirety the Barangay Tawai budget, uh, annual budget CY 2025 amounting to 8,349,297 pesos and moving further to be full force. So, we start.
First motion passed by Honorable Turalba, in a second? In a second? Discussion? Ah, in a second? Any discussion? Seconded by Honorable Chong, any discussion? Amendment, discussion? Objection? There being none, motion approved? Objection? There being none, motion approved? Anymore?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Honorable, um, Catalunya, you may have the floor now?
Committee report number 570, uh, on a resolution, uh, a request approving the five identified local cultural inventory of the municipality of Ipil for appropriate review and approval and enactment of, uh, a resolution. The Committee on Tourism, to which was referred the request of the municipal mayor, Anamel Si Oligario, for passage of a resolution approving the five identified local cultural inventory of the municipality of Ipil, Sambuanga Cibugay. The said inventory was prepared by the tourism officer and favorably endorsed to the office of the municipal mayor and to be submitted to the National Commission for Culture and Arts for the inclusion in the Philippine Registry of Cultural Property. The registry of cultural properties is deemed important as it will serve as repository for the nation's dynamic culture. Likewise, identifying local cultural inventory is a must for the LGU to comply with the national mandate, particularly the Joint Circular, Joint Memorandum Circular Number 2021-001, for the issuance of certificate of compliance wide from being a requirement for the seal of good local governance. Therefore, the committee hereby recommends for its approval, particularly the brass agong, betel nut box, kulintang, and clay water jar. Uh, I move for the adoption of committee report number 570, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba? How, Catalunya?
Second, Honorable.
Seconded by Honorable Alapit, any discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, Honorable Turalba? Please just for one minute.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just only want to, uh, regarding that, uh... Tangible materials, no, for, uh, to be donated at the national, what's that, Doc, tourism?
Yes.
Tourism? Uh, sayang po, kun, kay, lisod ba na pangitaan dire sa tuang level? Then, uh, being an indigenous community of the province, we need that, so, uh... Maayotong ako, an, recommendation?
Any comment from the proponent?
Uh, I think this, uh, this, uh, request from the Committee on Tourism Office is... The Tourism Office is properly safe keep, these tangible materials. These tangible materials. Can you share this with, uh, generations, submasmayo, dina? Generations, submasmayo, properly, uh, taken care of, taking mga tangible materials. Historical purposes, uh... Historical purposes, uh...
Anymore discussion?
Anymore discussion?
Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved?
Uh, I move for a resolution approving the five identified local cultural inventory of the municipality of Ipil, as identified by the municipal tourism officer, and endorse the same to the National Commission for Culture and Arts.
Second, seconded by Honorable Alapit, any discussion? Amendments, objection, there being none, motion approved? Anymore committee report? Um, before we proceed, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Fiximal Palalon. Ma'am, good morning. Anymore committee report? Honorable Ramos?
Uh, I have none, committee report, but I would like to ask the, uh, ask to the status, would like to ask the, uh, the Chairman of the Committee on Ordinances, uh, Rules and Resolutions up to the status.
Okay, sir, uh, next, other matters na lang na tawigan? Okay. Um, no more other matters, Madam Secretary, um, for business for today, second reading?
Hello, okay, for the business for the day, calendar and second reading, still, we still have three. The first one is the ordinance declaring by Yan Kumpinag Mulan as official him of this municipality, still laid on the table. The second is the adoption of the Palinki QR Code, program to be implemented this municipality, sponsored by Honorable Catherine Turalba.
So, what's up, uh, pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chair, to be calendared on the next regular session for second reading?
Okay.
Item C, uh, we have the ordinance establishing an integrated system to prevent mandicancy in the municipality of Ipil and creating the anti-mandicancy board and providing penalties there. Still, again, sponsored by Honorable Catherine Turalba.
We are now on other matters, anyone can suspend the rules to accommodate our other matters, please?
I want, Mr. Chair, for the suspension of the rules.
Who suspended? Sir, you may have the floor now, sa, atong sa committee, pagtanan mo?
Do na lang ko'y, uh, query... to to our chairman of the committee on rules, ordinances and, uh... with respect to my ordinance which has been repealed to his school of air committee for I think more than two months, so siguro. To be nas nga granting cash assistance of thirty thousand each sa senior citizens, magidado ninety, ninety-five. Kung masai status, at tuntuha, because I re- I, I inquire the budget according to the budget officer. She already submitted this certification as to the thing more there is no availability of funds with respect to granting of thirty thousand each sa kada senior citizens nga magidado ninety, ninety-five. So, as to whether, wala is sufficient budget, na, kinanan the committee on rules or an ordinance is to render report para may bawon at usai status tungkuan ako, harum ma deliberate this budget ba? Eh, the, the budget officer is a willing, is a agreeable to reduce the amount to ten thousand nga magidado ninety, ninety-five, mga senior citizens, kay, anang panona kumain na kay mga senior citizens, magidado ninety, ninety-five, yes?
Okay, ano, madok, matamo. Mupasa ni balora. Okay, thank you, Honorable Ramos. Um, any comment from the committee chair of committee on rules?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, it was already previously reminded to the, to the committee on rules, ordinances and resolutions with the concern of the Honorable Ramos being the chairperson of the committee on senior citizen. Mr. Chair, the said proposed ordinance of the Honorable Ramos was, uh, uh, transmitted to the office of the municipal budget officer because it has a budgetary requirements. So, the, the committee is waiting for the response of the, of the said office because until now, we, we haven't received any document responding to the request of the, uh, committee on rules and ordinances for preliminary review on the said proposed, proposed ordinance. Much to our desire to render said committee reports as what the Honorable Ramos is waiting. But we cannot do it because we cannot do it because we did not have the reply from the office of the municipal budget, Mr. Chair.
Any more query? Honorable Ramos, I could be to the budget officer. I could be to the budget officer. They already certification, I submit it to. Next certification, I submit it to your, what? I think it's, uh, it's a for the chairman to make it follow up.
Chairman to make it follow up.
It's a
We have no pending, uh, committee reports in our honor, Mr. Chair. Rest assured, with the request of the Honorable Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Honorable Toralba. No more other matters? Just Honorable Palalo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Uh, we have received a endorsement letter from the office of the municipal mayor to the San Guniyang Bayan members. It was a counter in our agenda because it was just received by this august body. It is a letter requesting for an ordinance, demanding a one-way directional flow of traffic along Subgang Avenue, Divi Tereka, two AMM CX and Tomas Cloudy Street respectively located in Barre, Población. Ipil-Sambuanga-Cibugay on May nine, twenty twenty-five, starting at three PM until the end of the program during the month of May. Of Delacase and being four.
Please just for one minute. Please just for one minute. Motion passed by Honorable Palalo. Any second? Seconded, Benol Ramos. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, I move to convene this August body into committee of the whole.